For Terry and Don to join us.
Okay, we need a flag salute. We need to do the flag salute. Let's see. Mr. Margot, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Does Mel have his flag? There you go. Okay, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Margot. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please. Would somebody?
So move.
Thank you, and I'll second that. So write this down. Okay. I have no public statements. So all those in favor of approving the agenda, we'll take a roll call. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hackers, yes, that's five zero. Thank you. So we are going now to planning and facilities. May I please have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-2020-030, the emergency resolution for abandonment of oil wells.
Okay. I will second that myself. Great discussion. Discussion, adoption of resolution for number 2019.
Are we gonna go around the horseshoe?
You know what? I'm actually gonna start with you, Tristan. I think last time you started and we haven't gone to you and open, so we're gonna start with you.
Okay.
And then I'll work my way back to Mrs. Marcus and then around to Noah.
So, um, I do have a bunch of questions. The last time we revisited this agreement, we talked about all the different reasons for all the different parts, but it just came back to us with changes, but without red lines.
Point of order, Mrs. Hacker. Mrs. Walker Schuman, this is the resolution, not the contract.
Right, that was the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to approve the adoption of the resolution.
Okay, I, that I don't need to discuss. I need to discuss.
Okay, so is there any discussion on that? Okay, is there any discussion, any further discussion? Nope. Okay, so all those in favor? Mr. Margot?
Aye.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. That's five zero. The resolution passes unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda. May I please have a motion? Okay, nobody wants to make a motion? It's hard for me to talk. Mrs. Marcus, Mr. Margot?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. My mic was off. Make a motion for the approval of the reimbursement agreement for approved oil well abandonment costs between Beverly Hills Unified School District and Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. I will second that. Okay, discussion. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Okay, sorry. So as I was saying, we, the last time we reviewed this, there were some different content. There have been changes made and this has been presented to us for approval, but I don't see any red lines here, but I do see that there are things that are different. So I actually would like to ask to move to table this so that we have an opportunity to have a discussion with our attorneys before we actually vote on it. But I'm happy to bring up some of the areas where I have questions and I just want to make sure that that Terry's on with us. Yeah, it looks like Terry's on with us. So on page five of the agreement, under the project schedule, I see that we now have dates that are connected with construction of each of the sides of the tunnel. This looks to me like it's new. And I'm concerned that by having dates in here, we're tying ourselves to a schedule that we may not be able to fulfill.
I concur. Mr. Tao, did you want to respond to that?
Well, we that whereas that we're looking at, which is on page five, it's the first whereas under the project schedule, was included, requested included by Metro to show what it is that their anticipated schedule is, though it's not locked down within the terms of the contract.
It doesn't say anticipated. It just says it's scheduled to commence.
Yeah, it's just a commencement.
And I'd like to point out, I mean, this is actually a really big deal. Construction of the right tunnel beneath the property is scheduled to commence on August 12th. That means they would be burnt, that would be tunneling under the high school during school, where schools in session. And we haven't made a decision not to have classes in person yet. I'm not okay having the tunnel boring machine underneath the school while the kids are there on campus.
Understood.
So I would not be in favor of agreeing to the contract because this part specifically would allow the, for the tunnel boring machine under the campus while the kids are potentially there. Now, if they want to come back at another time, if we decide that we're not doing school in person in the fall, they want to go ahead and do that, you know, first semester, assuming that the kids are not going to be back on campus. If that's the will of the board, then I think that's a conversation to be had, but I'm not willing to agree right now to have that drilling happen under the campus starting August 12th. And the other part says that the high school campus is closed to students indefinitely. I think, I mean, I don't really see it that way. We have a start date. And again, we haven't decided that we're not going to have any in-person classes on August 17th, so I don't think it's indefinite. I think it's for the time being. But I wouldn't say that that's necessarily indefinite. And then further down, it says, whereas on that same page, page five, the parties agree that the well abandonment work should commence during the period while students are not at Beverly Hills High School campus. Well, yeah, commence, but I don't think it should take place while there are students on the campus. I don't think that's the same as commence. That kind of commence just says to me that that's the beginning. Not that that's gonna be wrapped up. So I would be in favor of making some changes and I'm sure that there are others. I've got some other areas that I highlighted, but I actually would prefer to see a red line version so that I know what the differences are between the last version that we discussed and this particular one. So that we know where our areas of work are, where the things are that we have to revisit. I want to be really cognizant that we're not just, you know, moving forward with the verbiage that Metro feels comfortable with. It needs, we need to make sure that we feel comfortable with it. It's our students that we have to protect.
Understood. Can get to a red line.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to table this item until we have a chance to review a red line and discuss further. And if there's a time, you know, tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, I think we're all pretty available, where we could review the red line and then come back before we vote on approving the agreement. I think that would be wise.
So we could put this, and Mr. Tao, the question is to you just for timing and deadline. For, is it too late for the the 20?
The 29th, we have a board meeting. We can just put it there.
We have one on the 26th, too.
I thought, yeah.
I will second Tristan's motion.
I'll have to, I'll have to withdraw my motion first before you move to table.
Okay.
I'm kind of talking to myself here. Yes, we have to withdraw the motion. And I think there has to be consensus, right, that we agree with Tristan to take this off the agenda and table it. So, Mr. Tao, did you want to state anything for the record as far as, you know, I do have a question though before we table it. Nothing to do with the contract, but more about the process? That's okay?
Of course.
So so I have, I share the same concerns and just wondering the timing of all of this, is it, is there a reason these dates? I mean, do we have to agree to dates or, I mean, we're gonna have this discussion. But is there an urgency to get this done sooner before next Tuesday?
It does not necessarily need to be done before next Tuesday. I actually had a plan to go with the ARB contract, which is actually on your agenda for the 26th. I thought it might be helpful to have the reimbursement agreement out of the way before the ARB contract. But it doesn't necessarily need to be. I would say that this has been heavily negotiated over the past probably four weeks with Metro. So a lot of it is really about reimbursement. The scheduling pieces, we had a little bit with because we had some methodologies that would have gotten the project done earlier. And Metro wanted to be a little bit more linear in how they approach things. So what we did was we said, okay, under your best case scenario, it's possible to make the deadline. Therefore, you will work with what you anticipate, assuming that all the contingencies that you anticipate will occur. So that's kind of where we left it with them. That's why you don't have any specific, we will complete by a certain date. Instead, what you have is you have their anticipated commencement date.
I think, I mean, there are, there are, there's an order that conversations, because of the pandemic and because of this issue kind of colliding, they need to happen in a certain order. And I know that we don't really have the luxury of time and, you know, by next Tuesday, when we're having a presentation of what the options are for fall, obviously, we're not going to be making a decision that day. But I would say even at the prospect, like some of the universities, you know, back east have decided to start school early or their regular August date and then conclude just before Thanksgiving and they're not coming back until the beginning of second semester. If we're talking about doing something like that, or if that's the direction the board goes in, there's gonna be five or six weeks where a ton of boring machine could easily go under the campus when there are no kids there. So I'm not inclined to agree to allowing that to happen while the kids are there when we have options that we need to look at. And I know it's a really difficult negotiation, but I think that we still don't have enough information to commit to allowing that to happen. So I just, I think we need to talk about it further.
So I agree that we should table this and let me go, I think there's consensus amongst the board members. If you oppose, can you raise your hand? Okay, I don't see anybody's hands, I don't see anyone's hand going up, so we're gonna, we're gonna table this for discussion on Tuesday? Next Tuesday? Terry, if you need to convene the board sooner than that, then shoot Dr. Bregy and I an email and we will convene sooner. And I think that's it. Mr. Margot?
Yeah, so let me officially withdraw the motion.
Thank you. And I will agree to that.
Thank you. So now you need to move to table it, but before we do that, Terry, if we put this next Tuesday, you have to be clear with us about when you need this voted on, not discussed, but voted on. Okay? So just be clear with Dr. Bregy about your timeline when this gets agendized one way or the other.
All right.
I would agree with that.
Well, the only suggestion I would make is if you have any particular comments, maybe jot them down and then send them all to me and I will take them up with Metro in a discussion.
Well, I would just say, just to be consistent, um, wait, my, can you hear me? We can, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I would just say that I, those dates are troublesome and they have to be clearly explained to the board because the last thing we want to do is, is put ourselves in a situation where we've caused a problem, right? Necessarily. And looking at the start dates of our school calendar is, I think, a priority for the district and as is said, right now, we don't have any reason to believe that that, those dates won't be coming to fruition. Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
So I will officially move to table this approval of the reimbursement agreement for approved oil well abandonment costs between BHUSD and LA County MTA to the meeting next Tuesday, the 26th of May.
I second the motion.
I will second. I will second that if you require, I think we are required to have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that, Mr. Spitz? Mr. Margot, yes, that's a aye.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. This concludes our meeting and so our meeting now is adjourned and we will be moving into our study session.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and let me call this. Change screens here. Okay, we're going to now move into our open session, our study session, having to do with our budget study session. Mr. Wade, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. I have to say in my 20 years of doing these, this is the first time I've had to do one on a on a call like this, so it kind of threw me a little bit, but we'll try to get through this and answer any questions that the board and staff may have as we go through this. Let me try to share my screen with you guys. Do you guys see something?
Not yet. You see your J.
Oh, you don't see anything, okay. Anything now?
Wade, did you select a window? Did you select a window to share?
I selected.
I see it. It could be made more clear, I don't know. It doesn't look clear to me.
Can you folks see it at all?
Laura says.
I can't see it at all, but I've got it up on the corporate.
I do not, I do not see it. I see that there is a big black area that says Presentation Ren J. Wade Roach. And there's a big J and a green circle. That's all I see.
Okay, let me try.
I see the budget study session and the overview, but they are so tiny and so blurred that I very difficult to make it.
So this is definitely user error.
Something just popped up, Wade.
I can see it now, Wade.
I see it.
Yeah.
Okay, you guys see it now?
Yeah, only use one page at a time. You had two pages up before.
Oh, okay, so you see one page at a time now?
Yes.
Yeah, because you're not in slideshow mode. I think it's, you're just showing your, you're just showing your slide deck, but you're not in presentation mode.
So if this works, we'll go with this, if that's okay with you guys. If you guys can see it, if we go to that one.
Why don't you enlarge, why don't you enlarge it a little bit, Wade? There's a slider at the bottom right.
Okay.
Right at the bottom of the PowerPoint presentation, there's a minus and a plus. Can you see it?
Yeah, I'm enlarging it now. Does that do anything for you?
There's a little bit of a delay.
It looks fine to me. I can see it clearly.
I can see this now better than I could before.
It's a, it's a pretty good size, Wade.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get started then. Thank you guys for, for coming to this. It's kind of nice. I have a captive audience. In the past, when I do these, I do it in an auditorium and people would sneak out the back. So it's kind of nice that I've got you here to talk about the budget. So I want to thank Dr. Bregy and the staff for their input, especially Angelie also, for working with me and working with these numbers. These numbers are changing constantly as we speak. We had the May revise this morning from School Services. We got a lot of input from them. So the thing I want to start with is that this is a very fluid budget right now. We expect some more changes between now and the middle of June when we when we present something for the board to adopt. And I guess that's kind of the nature of this talk this afternoon about the uncertainty of the budget. At the state level, what we're seeing is the state has no clue right now what the what the personal income tax is going to be coming in next year. You know, they delayed the receipt of income tax from April to July. The sales taxes are coming in much lower than even the state anticipated. Property taxes are lower. So at the state level, there's a, there's a huge amount of uncertainty. In a traditional year, a normal year, the legislature would approve the budget June 15th and the governor would sign the budget by June 30th. We expect that to happen. But for the first time in many years, we also expect that they're gonna come back, especially after the July tax receipts come in and revise the budget. So we fully expect that come August, September, we'll have to come back and revise parts of our budget also based on the funding that we do get from the state of California. You know, it's not as great in a, in a community funded district, but there are parts of our budget that are tied to the state budget. So we're gonna have to come back probably in August, September and have another conversation with the board about the budget. So there's a lot of uncertainty at the state level and there's a lot of uncertainty too at the, at the local level as we move forward. So we want to talk a little bit today about, you know, the revenue and the expenditures and the reserve. So I'm gonna look at my, this is really big on my screen, so I'm gonna take a look at my actual hard copy presentation so I can talk to you guys. You know, for us, for Beverly Hills Unified, the biggest part of our revenue in the general fund, of course, is property taxes. The second biggest, as you'll see later, is JPA. And then we also get money from the state for something called a state minimum guarantee or a basic aid guarantee. And then we get some state and federal categorical funds. And those are our pots of, our biggest pots of money that we have in the general fund. So when we look at, when we look at property taxes, so our property taxes are based on property values really as of, as of July 1st. So we don't expect a big decrease in the anticipated increase. So we, pre-COVID, we anticipated that for 2021, the property tax.
He's gone. What happened?
You know, I didn't, yeah, Wade will have to come back. Or I had a question, I couldn't see him flipping the pages, could you? No.
No, I'm just looking at it separately. So, yeah.
So I guess this concludes our meeting and so it's that bad, huh?
Right. There's nobody else to talk about.
So when Wade comes back on, is just tell me if this is better.
You think he knows he's off? He should probably, someone should text him.
Wait.
I did, I texted it.
Okay, good. I don't want him to to think we're still on.
Hang on one second, let me.
I wonder if his, because he was reading off his slide deck, I wonder if his computer went to sleep.
Dr. Bregy, if you, I think you might be doing this, but maybe you can share his presentation and flip the slides.
Yeah, exactly what I'm doing.
Awesome.
Is this better? Oops.
Angelie, you can step in. I see Angelie on the screen.
They shut Wade's electricity off.
Yeah, that's weird. Has he replied to Rebecca? Because I haven't, he didn't reply to me.
He didn't reply to me and he's at the district, so if they shut the electricity off, we're in big trouble. Right, we didn't pay the bill.
Exactly.
Okay, so Angelie's with us.
Can everybody see the screen? Is it better?
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's really weird that he just disappeared.
Okay.
Okay.
I know.
While we wait, happy birthday for them.
Happy birthday, Lauren.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Any word from Wade?
I'm calling. Went right to voice, no.
Okay, so we'll give it five more minutes and I think if he's having a, an issue with connecting, then we should probably, unless Angelie or somebody can carry the study session, I don't think there is a purpose to continue.
Okay, you're on speaker.
Thank you so much. I have no clue how far I got with this conversation, but somebody can tell me.
We're up to risks to the state budget.
Oh, okay, sorry, it's getting very far off. Okay, thanks so much. So as I was saying, at the, at the state, at the state level, there's so many risks to the state budget related to funding, whether that be personal income taxes, whether that be self-tax income, there's risk to the economy statewide and nationwide and actually worldwide. So there's a lot of uncertainty as the budget is being developed at the state level. That being said, the state has certain deadlines, so we fully expect the date by June 15th. The legislature to adopt the budget and we expect the governor to sign a budget by June 30th. We thoroughly check that to be the final state budget. We expect that in July, when the tax receipts actually do end, that the state will go back and revise their budget and their Prop 98 budget for next year. We don't get a huge amount of money from the state of California, but we do get enough support from to pay attention to the state budget and how it impacts Beverly Hills Unified. So today what I want to do is talk about the big ticket items for Beverly Hills Unified's revenue, which are basically property taxes and the JPA, the minimum guarantee and some other funding that we're gonna get from state and federal government. So if you go to, we're just gonna jump and go to slide number seven, Michael, if you can do that. So our revenue projections right now are that that our property taxes are gonna increase by 4% for next year. That's down from 4.5% pre the COVID disaster. So we're gonna decrease our property tax projection a little bit. Right now in the budget, it stands that we're gonna have $11.5 million in JPA funding. That's up for discussion, of course. There's gonna be a reduction in our minimum state aid.
Oh, sorry to interrupt. Wade, could you speak right into your phone? It's a little bit difficult to hear. I'm so sorry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. So there is going to be a reduction in the minimum state aid of at least 10%. There is not going to be any cost of living adjustment in any of our other state programs in fact. We're looking at a 50% reduction in our state categorical for next year, not including state or food services. But we are gonna get some additional funds and we'll talk about that regarding the COVID disasters from state, additional state and federal dollars. Turning out of property taxes, if you look at slide eight, you'll see this slide is courtesy of state services. The governor did sign an executive order that waived late penalties for folks that can't pay their, their taxes. We're a little bit concerned about that because if you flip to slide number nine, LA County is a, is not a teacher county. What the, a teacher county is the county where the county will distribute property taxes to entities like cities and school districts based on what should have been collected, not what has been collected. LA County is one of only five counties in the state of California that's not on the teacher plan. What that means is whatever LA County collects, actually cash in the bank, that's what they distribute. What that means is whatever LA County collects, actually cash in the bank, that's what they distribute. So if, if a district was expecting a hundred dollars and the county only collects ninety dollars, that district will only get ninety dollars. They won't get the hundred dollars. They, and so LA County is unique in that way, not being in the teacher plan. So that could impact our cash flow moving forward. The next slide, slide 10. Uh, it's just a historical look at our property tax revenue since 1516. You can see the growth there from 41.5 million dollars, uh, up to the current year and anticipated 55.2 million dollars. So when you look at that, you, you want to understand, you know, why is the property tax revenue growing? So, uh, you look for, you know, is it linked to asset valuation? Is it linked to, uh, collection? So, um, so when you look at slide number 11, what you'll see is a comparison with the LA County Assessor projections. So is it, uh, analysis, just to see, is there any, is there any correlation between the increase that we have in property taxes and, uh, um, the, the LA County, uh, property tax projection? So you'll see in 1516, looking at this slide, uh, there's an increase from the prior year of 5.92% in the LA County Assessor projection. But then that same year, we received eight percent more in property tax revenue. 1517, you had a flip where the Assessor's projection was higher than the, the actual increase that we received. So you'll see there's, there's really no, and there's a great difference in 1718 and 1819, but in 1920, it looks like it's about the same number. So, um, so there's no, no immediate correlation between the, the LA County property tax projection and what we collect in property taxes. Go to the next slide. You'll see, if you look at asset valuation, likewise, there's not a clear correlation. If you look at 1516, there is an increase. Uh, the asset valuation was higher. Uh, but then in 1718, there is the VHTC increase, the asset valuation change is lower. So there's no clear correlation there. But, uh, so I believe that, uh, actually the finance committee has been looking at this over the last several years. And they, I think they took a, a delegation to the Tax Assessor's Office, you know, two or three years ago, just to try to figure this out, why there's no clear, you know, no clear pattern, no clear correlation. Um, basically what I can tell the board is that we get good numbers probably in October of November of each year. So we have a projection for, uh, 2021, but we won't have geared numbers probably until October or November. Um, and we do not have any type of multi-year out-year projections. County, uh, Assessor's Office doesn't do any multiple year out-year projections, um, at this point. So what we have in the multi-year projection budget right now is, as we mentioned earlier, in 2021, uh, this is slide 13, an increase of, um, four percent. We've held that steady in 2122. So we show no increase in property taxes in 2122, and then a 2% increase in 2223. That's what we currently have in the budget. The second biggest tranche of revenue that we have in the general fund, of course, is, uh, the funding through the JPA, the Joint Powers Agreement with the City of Beverly Hills. Um, on the slide number 14, you'll see that, looking at all of our unrestricted general fund dollars, uh, you see property taxes there at 78%. Uh, you see the other state revenue at 4.4 million. And you'll see that the JPA constitutes $11.5 million of our total unrestricted general fund revenue. Uh, uh, we are in discussions right now with the, uh, Beverly Hills about the JPA. It expires on June 30th. Uh, it is always our goal to have a, a, a multi-year agreement with the JPA, with the City of Beverly Hills and the JPA. So this is such a large part of our general fund revenue that the county office of education has a concern when we don't have, uh, this, uh, this revenue stream, um, ironed out, if you will, moving forward. So we, we hope to, to work on that and get that ironed out, uh, over the next two or three weeks, but definitely before the budget is adopted. Uh, moving on to other revenues that we have in the general fund. On slide 15, we spoke earlier about minimum state aid. Uh, we found out this weekend that that's actually going to be cut also, at least 10%. Uh, so we're talking about a cut of about $133,000 of the $1.3 million. Technically, it could go down, uh, if you look at the language, technically, it could go down as low as $400,000, give or take. It could be taken down to our 1213 level, or about $120 for ADA. Um, so right now, uh, it's, uh, 1.3. We're going to cut it, uh, by $130,000 and technically it could go down as low as, uh, $400,000.
I hate to interrupt you. Bobby is at, Bobby is outside his door and he's going to help him. Oh, here he is.
I am here. Thank you so much.
Yay.
Thank you so much. This was, uh, now if I can figure out how to use, uh, this computer.
Oh, he's still presenting. Michael's still presenting.
Oh, Michael's presenting. Oh, yeah, Michael's presenting. Okay, you drive, Michael.
Yep.
All right. So next slide. So here we kind of have a summary of our, a big picture of our general fund revenue. Um, I've got Angelie here now in my office to answer any really tough questions. But if you look at our, our revenue sources, you have your local there. That's your PTA, your Education Foundation, other organizations that support us. Right now, we're anticipating the amount to go down, uh, the revenue down, uh, to 555,000 for 733,000 in the current year. The confidence level for that projection is high. Uh, our property tax, uh, projection is there. Uh, we're, we're neutral on the confidence level. Um, JPA also, we're neutral on the confidence level of it staying at 11.5 million. You see there the minimum state aid, the EPA, a reduction there. Uh, we think it's going to be that amount unless things get a little bit worse at the state level. Categorical, we show a reduction there. Um, state fund, excuse me, federal funds, we expect to be fairly, uh, constant moving forward. Um, and then we have a, a, a tranche of new dollars, uh, related to the COVID disaster. We have something called, uh, gear state funds. Uh, we have something called, uh, ESER, ESER funds from the federal government and then the CARES Act. So if you look at the state funds gear and the ESER funds, those are about $485,000. Um, a part of that, uh, up to 10% of that, uh, may have to be allocated to the local private schools. Uh, kind of like we allocate some of our title monies to the private schools. Uh, but we were confident with that amount of funding. And then there's the CARES Act. So if we go to the next slide, Michael, you'll see just a graphical, uh, depiction of that, the, uh, the, the gear funds and then the ESER funds. And go to the next slide. The CARES Act, uh, is $4 billion from the federal government. It, it's broken down into segments. $1.5 billion, uh, uh, distributed to pupils based on the number of students with a disability. That's $1,900 per student. We have not seen that formula. We don't know what they, how they, uh, define disability. Uh, but just looking at it, uh, if, uh, you know, 11% of our students are defined as having special ed services of some sort, we're looking at maybe 600, $650,000 of funding to come through that channel of funds. The other channel, the $2.8 billion are only for those districts that get concentration grants. Those are high need districts. We don't expect to get any of those dollars. So if we do get 655,000 of additional dollars, they have to be expended by December 30th on those things on the bottom of your slide. Either extending the instructional year or additional academic services for our special needs students, learning supports, wraparound services. So that would be great if those funds do come in for our special needs or at-risk students, to be able to have those funds to help us jumpstart the, the school year in, uh, in August and September. Uh, next slide, Michael. Go ahead, go ahead to the next one. We're going to talk about expenditures. Um, just, uh, as a primer, the board and the staff know that 81% of our total general fund expenditures are on staffing. Um, next year is the last year of our collective bargaining agreement. Um, when we're looking at our budget, we're having some fairly large increases in property and liability insurance rates, and we'll talk about that. We have a lot of unknowns when we look at our expenditure budget. Uh, and those unknowns are really driven by what is a program? What is the instructional program going to look like next year? Uh, the cost of a, uh, online program is going to look different than the cost of a hybrid program. Um, and those impact our other programs like food services and Sped, uh, directly. So there's a lot of unknowns. As we spoke about the unknowns at the state level, there's so many unknowns about program delivery and all those things, uh, impact the, the budget moving forward.
Okay, Michael.
So here are our current assumptions, a 4.92% salary increase, uh, per the CBA, a $500 increase in medical benefits. There's a step in column increase every year. And we're going to have the opportunity, uh, to have a one-year decrease in the workers' comp rate from 5% to 1.5%. You want to go ahead and turn that off? And I'll just, yeah, just close the door.
Close the door.
Yeah. Uh, some other general fund staffing adjustments that we've been able to make. Um, uh, we've had some, we've been able to make some certificated reductions. You see them there on the screen. Uh, we've also cut certificated management, classified management, and other classified positions throughout the district. Uh, go to the next slide, Michael. So these are the costs, uh, and the, the fiscal impacts of those adjustments we've made. Um, to implement the final year of the CBA salary increase, that's a cost of $1.9 million. The medical cap portion of the CBA is $154,000. Uh, just to service our salary, schedule increase, step in columns, 376,000. Uh, but if you look at those reductions we made on the prior slide, uh, and certificated management and classified, that's a savings of $2.1 million. And the decrease in the, the one-time decrease in the workers' comp rate is $1.6 million. Just to talk a little bit more about workers' comp, over the past couple of years, we've been budgeting a, a 5% rate for workers' comp. So we've been over-budgeting, uh, for workers' comp. So we've created, um, a, a, a fund, if you will, uh, available dollars that we can use for workers' comp for next year. So we're able to reduce the workers' comp rate for one year, giving us this savings. So, um, that over-budgeting for workers' comp is now going to help us as we move into, uh, 2021, although it's just a one-time reduction in the workers' comp rate. Okay, Michael? So we're having, uh, some fairly large increases in proper and liability insurance rates. Um, a lot of it has to do with, of course, all the nat- natural disasters here in the state of California. So property insurers are pulling out of the state of California. On the liability side, uh, there's been new legislation that's passed regarding the statute of limitations for sectional abuse claims, allowing folks to go back decades to file claims. Uh, when you, when you look at those two things, we're having, so we're having an increase in our property and liability insurance rates. And you can see the increase in the premium from $536,000 in the current year to $645,000 next year. Additionally, uh, several several years ago, we were part of a JPA called SELF. Uh, and, and we, we have some exposure based on our, our membership in that old JPA. So we're going to have to budget another $17,500, uh, per year for the next three years to cover potential liability related to the new legislation. Okay, Michael? So when we look at reserves, uh, right now, our board policy states that we need to keep a minimum reserve of 20%. Uh, currently, our reserves are about 26%. As a, uh, community-funded basic aid district, it's really important that we keep our reserves higher uh, because we don't have any floor or basement on our funding. If property taxes, uh, tank, uh, the floor that we get to is actually becoming an LCFF district. So we could lose as much as $5,600 per ADA, uh, before we'd hit the floor in funding and become an LCFF district. So it's so important that we keep a, a high reserve. Um, you know, I hear people say that, you know, 26% is really too high. But if you go to the next slide, you'll see that it's not, because these are the statewide average reserve levels. And these, you know, remember that a majority of districts are LCFF districts. Uh, only about 80 or so are basic aid districts. And you'll see that, on average, these folks have between 15 and 20% reserves. So having a 26% reserve is not too high. And I, I would always recommend to the board to, you know, keep a reserve that's at, at least 20%, um, because it's important, because we are a basic aid, uh, district. So next slide, Michael. So here we have a draft. Now you see I put draft in bold and underlined and italics, multi-year projection. Um, and we'll just go through this. This is what it looks like right now. Property tax revenue, you can see there, the JPA revenue, all other state and local, federal. So it's really important when you look at this, as you look at this, you can see vividly that JPA revenue exceeds all other state, federal, and local revenue. So other than property tax revenue, JPA revenue is the most important revenue stream in this district for general funds, uh, purposes. Um, we have our salary and benefits there, 64.9 million. Supplies, 1.7 million. Services, uh, 11.8 in services. That's where you'll see your property taxes, your utilities, things like that. We have our transfer to maintenance, deferred maintenance and food services. This is the first time that you will see that, that we're actually going to transfer about $1.6 million into deferred maintenance for, uh, for much-needed projects. So total expenses of $80.6 million. So based on all those assumptions that we just talked about, uh, of revenue and expenditures, we have a deficit, um, we're deficit spending next year, oh, oh, a little over a billion dollars. Um, so when you carry that out based on our assumptions in 2122, that deficit spending grows to 2.7 million. And then in 2223, that deficit spending grows to almost $4 million, based on those assumptions we have cooked in the budget right now. Um, those are kind of frightful numbers. You know, our goal as we develop a budget is always to develop a, a balanced budget that our, our expenses don't exceed our revenue, that we're able to maintain our reserve level. If we did nothing, our reserve level, as I said on the previous slide, would drop by 9%. So you would be, you would be down to 17, 16, 17%. And that's, that's based on things like the JPA remaining flat funded 11.5 and that there's no other big hit in property tax or, or other kind of, uh, revenue. So, so we're at a point now where if we don't do anything, we're looking at a multimillion dollar deficit spending over the next three years. Uh, next slide, Michael. So at this point, you know, if we were in a room, I'd have the board go, the board members go up to different, uh, different, uh, whiteboards and, and spend a dot or, or talk about these different, the different items. But right now, I'm just putting these on a slide for things that we need to talk about. Uh, do, is the board comfortable as we develop our budget, our multi-year projections, uh, in effect? When we develop that narrative for the county office, are they comfortable talking about any of these items as possible solutions moving forward? Uh, none of these things have to be done right at the moment, but these are definitely things that we need to talk about moving forward. So that's the presentation. I, I apologize, uh, about, um, all the technical difficulties. I will be better at the next presentation, I promise.
So Wade, when you were offline, I told everyone we're going to do this again in an hour. Now, um, okay, so can you bring that page back? Because I think that was a very important question to capture for the board to consider. So you were asking us if there was any, any, um, issues with prioritizing some of those expenses? Is that what I understood?
Uh, yes, ma'am. We, we need to go over those and if we need to add some things, take things off. If there's things on that list that are definitely a no-go, then, then, then we should know about it.
Um, okay, I think we should start a discussion way we were phrasing that question, posing that question to every board member. Um, but along those lines, if, if, if nobody has an issue, I guess we should go around the horseshoe now and have you. and have you also ask or state any concerns or questions that you might have having to do with today's presentation for Wade. So we had started with Tristan, Mrs. Walker Schuman originally in the special board meeting, so we're going to continue down that path, starting with her. Then I'll go to Mr. Margot, Mr. Spitz. I'm sorry, we go this way, right? So Mrs. Walker Schuman will go first, then Mrs. Marcus, then we'll go to Noah and Mel. Okay? So, Mrs. Walker Schuman, the floor is yours.
So do you want to stick only about this particular slide, this addressing the deficit spending, or do you want, in totality, the questions and observations?
No, I think he posed a very interesting question for the board, so if you have something that you want to, if you have any objections or concerns about anything in that slide, here's your opportunity, but in addition to that, absolutely, take, take any, take this opportunity to phrase any questions or state any concerns that you might have.
Okay, so I'm going to start with, I think it was, the one I printed out is not the same one that was, is being shared, so I'm not a hundred percent sure the slides, numbers are the same, but it was slide five in my deck. It was the one that said current assumptions, and it talked about the property tax increase, how we're modifying it from where it was, so four percent from four point five. My question is, if we go back and look at two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when we had the, you know, Great Recession in two thousand ten even, do we have any kind of comparison to what the property tax increases were at that time that we can use kind of as a guideline? You know, instead of just trying to decrease what we had already projected, can we look back at that time and see what the property tax increases were, just by comparison?
Yes, we, we do have that data, it's very interesting that during the Great Recession that started in really oh-eight, oh-nine, nine-ten, we didn't see the property tax reduction until ten-eleven and eleven-twelve. So there's almost a two-year lag in the reduction, but we can definitely go back and do some more analysis to see if we can get some correlation. But it, but it, it's very clear that there is a year or two-year lag between the recession and the actual drop in property taxes.
So a reason to be even more conservative, because down, down the line, we're going to be looking at more significant limitations. I, I just want to say, I think, you know, I've, I've said this a couple of times when we've talked and, and have shared this with the board as well, I really, this is such a difficult thing to do without knowing what the JPA number is going to be. And I know that that's in discussions, and I know that, you know, we're working on all of that, but I think to assume that, that the JPA funding is going to stay at the level, the eleven and a half million is a mistake. You know, the, last week, the conversation that city council had about their budget, they had a study session similar to ours, they were talking about making eight percent decreases cut, and while there was some conversation about doing it across the board, then there was other conversation about, no, we need to really pick and choose. But I think that our assumption should be that, that our JPA agreement is going to be cut by at least eight percent, if not more. So I'd be more comfortable projecting what the numbers look like somewhere around ten million or ten point three instead of eleven and a half, because I think that's more likely where we're going to net out. And then in the assumptions, let's see, I'm trying to go back to all my notes. On the page that talks about other revenue impacts, the minimum state aid, you said that could go, did you say down by three, down by three hundred thousand, or down to three hundred thousand?
So the, so the minimum state aid right now is about one point three million. They've said that they will cut it ten percent, so that's about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Technically, however, there's language that talks about it going back to the twelve, thirteen level. So constitutionally, we're only guaranteed a hundred and twenty dollars per ADA. So if you took a hundred and twenty dollars per ADA and did the math, that's not, that's less than five hundred thousand dollars. So if, if things got sticky, technically, they could take us down to the constitutional level. Will they do that? I'm not sure. But it's something that we need to keep in the back of our minds, that we could go from one point three million to, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars, it's like four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars. That's a huge hit for our, our small general fund budget.
Yeah, that would be very significant. And then, let's see, I, I think I had asked this question, and you had answered, but just for the sake of sharing with everyone who's going to be watching, in your draft, multi-year projection, the salary and benefits increased, and I'd asked you, was that just benefits? Because we don't have a contract yet that reflects increases beyond the nineteen-twenty school year, and your answer to me was that it was, this year was considered part of the contract, but then it was zero percent and then two percent, correct?
Correct, thank you for pointing that out. So in our projections, what we have is a, the four point nine two percent next year, and then the following year, a zero percent salary increase, we always have step in column every year that we build in. But then in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, we did build in a two percent potential salary increase for our employees. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, so I think, you know, for the sake of conversation, not just for us now in this budget conversation, but given that we're also going to have to negotiate an agreement with the teachers for what the fall looks like, you know, with the changes that may or may not be there for online versus in-person instruction, and then actually negotiating a new contract with the teachers, I think it's really important to, you know, keep that in mind that this is a really tough time to be addressing budget issues, we've got so many things that are changing, moving, sliding every single day. So I think it's wise to be really conservative, I'd love to see, you know, I, I, this, this is so helpful to see the multi-year projection, but I'd really also like to see what's the ugliest version of this? What's the worst-case scenario? You know, the, the lowest JPA revenue that we think is going to happen, the lowest, you know, property tax revenue that we've seen historically in the last fifteen years, things like that, so that we know really what the ugliest scenario would be and how we could manage to find our way through that, because we don't really know what's going to happen. And then in terms of, I'll just end where we kind of ended in, after your presentation, in terms of addressing the deficit, these are all really good ideas. I would like to also look at food service, that if we're not going to be going back in, in full to classes, I think that we should look at our, our food service expenses and how we can try to make some changes or cuts there so that we are providing the food services that we're required to provide for the free and reduced meals. But how can we reallocate those assets? And then, you know, these are all really good suggestions, I think unfortunately, deferred maintenance is something that we've not planned for and done in a long time, so I would say that that's a reasonable thing to continue with, especially because that actually protects the safety of our students once, once they're back on campus, is having properly maintained facilities. Our OPEB funding, I mean, it's ironic that the finance committee was not super comfortable with the projections as they were left because they were so rosy, and now we're, you know, having this economic crisis. So, you know, there's some ways that they were probably right, but I'd, I'd really rather not defer too far off of what that plan looked like, of having all of our long-term liability paid, paid off and funded in the next ten years. Classroom staffing ratios, it's, again, ironic, because when we were having these discussions over, you know, earlier in the year with the teachers' union, they kept saying, well, we need to have, you know, these, these staffing ratios, we need to make it in the contract, and, and the exact reason why, when I was asked why that's not, that doesn't work for us, is because of an emergency situation. And here we are now finding ourselves in an emergency situation where we may have to make changes. And had we given that up, we wouldn't have the ability to make those changes now. So I think it's, you know, that's something else that we really have to look at and keep in mind, particularly if we're talking about going back in an online environment. Even if it's only for first semester, I think that's something we should look at. You know, the rest of these, I think, are great and definitely worth additional discussion, but I'm not going to take up too much more time, I'm going to let my colleagues have a turn, have a go, but I thank you, Wade and Angelie and everyone else that worked on this, it's no small task pulling everything together.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Marcus. You have to unmute yourself, Mrs. Marcus.
Okay, so I don't know if Mrs. Marcus is
I'm fine, okay. I want to thank Wade for a very great presentation, although, as I said, a very bleak picture of what the future seems to look like. And it's very depressing, as far as I'm concerned. A couple of things are, came to my mind that, is there, the, the assumption, and that we know things are going to drop, what do you feel probably would be the most problematical, and do you feel that, is it the property tax maybe not being there, or, and the, as far as the total picture is concerned? Or altogether, all of them, and everything is being cut proportionately, as far as you're concerned?
Well, there is a, there is a concern about property taxes. Property taxes are more stable than, say, the LCFF right now, or revenue limit that was during the Great Recession. But they tend to, when they drop, they drop a lot, and then it takes a year or two for them to come back. So I would say that, you know, property taxes are probably number two on my list, because it's probably an out-year kind of thing, and we have a little bit of time to plan for that. My biggest concern, honestly, is that the second biggest component of our budget is the JPA, and we don't have an agreement, and that ends technically in about five weeks. So that's eleven and a half million dollars.
I realize that those two are the biggest ones, and I'm worried about them myself. In terms of, we're really going to have to tighten our belt, it looks like, I mean, it really, if we want to try to somehow save a little bit of the, the budget, where do you think we can recoup some of our major losses? Where do you think we can do some digging in and tightening up?
Well, you know, since eighty-one percent of our budget is, is staffing, you know, really, we can talk about, you know, reducing supply budgets, and we can talk about, you know, cutting back on some other areas, and consultants, and things like that, legal fees. And that can make some difference, and that's something that we need to definitely look at, look at contracts and things like that. But the biggest bank for our buck, unfortunately, is going to be in, in staffing. So, I don't know, some of the board probably remembers back in the fall, we did an analysis of secondary staffing, and we looked at where were we compared to the, the cap of a hundred and forty-five contacts? And back in the first semester, when we looked at it, we were around, you know, somewhere around a hundred and twenty contacts on average for our secondary teachers. So I think we've done a great job, I mean, the staff have been working really hard this year, coming up with a great staffing plan for next year. So I don't have the master schedule yet, so I can't do that analysis. As soon as I get the master schedule, I can do the analysis to see if we've, I know we've improved from a hundred and twenty on average contacts. I know that we should be up, you know, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty. So if we got to a hundred and thirty-one contacts, we'd be at about ninety percent of the cap, and that's kind of like our goal. We should always be at ninety percent of our cap at least. So, so there's some, there's a little bit of tightening we can continue to do, probably, in secondary staffing. Is that a great number of FTE? Probably less than ten across the high school and the middle school. But remember, every FTE is somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think that's, I'm looking at Angelie, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a cost. So even if you, if you were able to, at the secondary level across six through twelve, find ten FTE, that's one point two million dollars. So that's a huge, and that stays within your, your cap of a hundred and forty-five. So all this discussion about, about FTEs assumes that, and it's open for discussion, but assumes that we're going to stay at a hundred and forty-five, and then twenty-three to one, you know, K three, so that's in twenty-nine to one for, fourth and fifth grade. So there's no, been no changes in our discussion about cap, our planning around cap, it's just staffing to that contract language. So there's not much wiggle room in the elementary, they're, they're pretty tight, they're much tighter than they were last year. So I think you, you know, probably ten or less FTEs that we could probably find. And then other things that we can talk about as far as staffing, of course, are things like looking at an early retirement incentive. I think we have one or two more years to pay off our, our old early retirement incentives, sometimes getting the more seasoned and veteran people to, to go ahead and retire, if that's what they want to do career-wise. You know, there, there's pros and cons to that, it's hard to find good teachers, too. So that, you know, you have to think about early retirement incentive programs. And finally, you know, in, you know, my neighbors in the LCFF districts are having robust conversations right now about furlough days. So a furlough day basically is an unpaid day. The good thing about a furlough day, it doesn't impact people's pension, it doesn't impact their stirs and purrs. So for every furlough day that we would have, and these are not instructional days, so you can still have a hundred and eighty instructional days, but for every furlough day that you could, could capture, that saves the district about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So there's, there's a lot of things that we can look at and, and as far as staffing is concerned.
I'm not really proposing any of these, I just want to know what some of the possibilities are, I mean, so that we can look at some of these things, because I think we are going to have to do some tight belting. If we want to preserve our, not go down as we are, a million dollars every year, one million, two million, and three million dollars every year, it seems to get, you know, more. And, and again, I know this is a very uncertain time, that we really don't know what's going to happen, but we have to be, you know, looking over our shoulders to see what's, and maybe looking ahead, too. So I thank you for your presentation, and
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Okay, Mr. Margot.
Thank you. So a couple of scattered thoughts, first, on the insurance increase, I noticed it's about, through SCR, it's about a twenty percent increase. That's not just our district, right, Wade, that's throughout California?
Yeah, so there's, there's, the SCR is part of a bigger pool, there's an NCR for Northern California. But across the whole state of California, we're in a JPA for insurance, we're not by ourselves, we, we're part of a JPA. So everyone in that pool of school districts is, is having an increase. Now, we get a modification to our increase based on our experience. So the pool has a rate, but then based on our experience, our, our claims, if you will, then our rate is modified up or down. So
Was, was this rate increase written in stone prior to the pandemic?
Yes, for the most part, it was already, the, the numbers were already cooked prior to the pandemic.
So has, has anybody in this consortium asked for an appeal on this increase?
No, not, not to my knowledge.
Is that something that can be done under this current circumstances?
Most JPAs don't have a mechanism for appeal. The, the, the process would be that you leave the JPA and find another pool to get your insurance from. So we, we, we technically, as far as I know, I can look at the memorandum of coverage and the operational language, but I'm not sure what we would be appealing, would be appealing our claims history and saying our claims aren't as bad, so our rate shouldn't be as bad. But there's not a real clear mechanism or clean mechanism to appeal. The, the JPA actually buys reinsurance from a multiple number of carriers. So if the board, and, and insurance is, is really exciting for people who like insurance, there's a lot of information that I can give to the board about the different levels of insurance we have and the different carriers. So it's not really a clear-cut ability just to appeal the rate.
Okay, I, I thank you for the answer, I, I wonder if it's, there's any relief there at all, but I had to ask the question. Have you budgeted for any online or hybrid learning for the fall?
So no, so we have the, you know, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we received from the state of the feds to date. Maybe the CARES Act will give us another, another six hundred thousand. We have not created the expense budget to go with that revenue, so that will all be kind of program-driven. So, so that revenue is going to be sitting there waiting for instruction in the programs out of the house to determine how to deliver the, the instruction in the fall. I, I don't, I don't believe it's going to be enough, given the, the things that we're going to have to do. If we exhaust all of the, the state funding, and then the, the federal funding, at that point, then we could go to FEMA and CalOES to get additional funding. But we have to exhaust all of those funding sources, and then we could go to FEMA.
Okay, thank you for that. As far as the SERP goes, I noticed that's on the list. As far as the SERP goes, I noticed that's on the list of potential items to address for deficit spending. Since this is the last year, as you noted, of the current teacher contract with the last contracted salary increase, do you think that there's a chance that a lack of a committed salary increase beyond next year might help usher in some retirements?
Yeah, in, in most districts, what you'll see is that at the end of a, 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 a cycle where a contract's coming to an end, especially a, a contract that's given multiple years of raises, you'll see that the teachers at the end of the salary schedule, those that are, are more veteran, will, will consider retiring. What a district can also do is do an early tell incentive so that you can go to your teachers before you offer a SERP and go to your teachers and say, in, in September, October, and say, for a very small amount of money, we will give you, if you tell us you're going to retire early, you're going to retire at the end of this year. So that we have a sense of, if we're going to have a large number of teachers that are going to retire on the natural, then we wouldn't necessarily offer a SERP. So, so, but you're absolutely right, there may be.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. My last question, Wade, is, is you mentioned, obviously, staffing being such a high percentage of our, of our spending. The deadline has passed, right? March 15th, May 15th, those deadlines have passed. What avenues do we have to reduce staff prior to this August, if we decide to go in that direction?
End School Services today, they did talk about an August window. There, there is legislation that allows us to open back up the layoff window in August if we don't get a COLA of at least 2%. Now, in the past, that avenue has been cut off from districts by other legislation. We don't know what's going to happen with that now. I mean, that would be pretty drastic. Basically, the board has a six-week window from July 1st through, like, August 15th to, to make that decision. You know, you could have some, you could have some retirements that happen over the summer. People just decide they can't do this anymore, they're going to retire. And then we could have some vacancies that we don't feel. But there is a potential for an August layoff window. But in my experience, it's never been exercised.
Okay. So, so the discussion really about staffing reductions is for outlying years then?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, I had one more question here, I apologize. Sorry, my notes are all scribbled. Oh, the, the federal and state aid, there's, I believe, another package on the floor in Washington, correct? That hasn't been approved yet?
Correct, there's a, there's a legislation called HERO legislation that passed the House that is currently, I think, sitting in the Senate. That would give some relief to state and local governments. At this point, we've not calculated any impact of that in any of our numbers.
Okay. I don't know if it will actually trickle down to us. I just, I'm wondering if that's something, if it does pass, that will help offset some of these costs. Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you very much for the presentation, Wade and staff.
Okay, Mr. Spitz.
Okay, thank you. I have a number of questions for Wade and comments. First of all, the way I see it, the most significant problem here, or at least the most significant unknown, is the JPA revenue. That's really significant. And I wanted to, I want to make sure I understood Mrs. Schumacher's comment about that. I would be totally opposed to forecasting any reduction. I didn't know, I, I think I heard her say we should consider, but I'm not sure whether she was advocating forecasting a reduction. I would be very, very much opposed to that. Because all we have to do is forecast a reduction, and you know we're going to get it. And I think that we are going to have to fight tooth and nail against any reductions at all. And I have some ideas about how to do that. Going on, Wade, my understanding is, again, that in the multi-year projections, there's no, no projected salary increase for year after next and the following year. The, the second and third years of this projection, there's, there's no salary increase projected. Is that correct?
So there is, in 2021, we have the 4.92% part of the collective bargaining agreement. In 21, 22, there is no increase. But in 22, 23, we do have a small 2% increase.
So now you can't, I don't believe that you can forecast an increase like that in any budget that you present to LACO. Because it hasn't, it hasn't, it hasn't been contracted for. So I'm wondering whether you intended to forecast that 2% and, and turn it into LACO? I don't, I, my understanding is you can't do that.
So Trustee Spitz, you can actually, in your, in your multi-year planning document, you can actually forecast anticipated salary increases. LACO, LACO will comment on that and say yes or no, or you can't, you probably can't afford that amount. But it's definitely okay to forecast an increase. And it's just that, it's just a forecast, it's a, it's a placeholder. But it's okay to forecast an increase.
Okay, just a comment about that. That kind of an increase is very much in what I would agree with because after coming off three years of huge increases in the old contract, I think that it would be perfectly supportable to think in terms of of cost of living increases. And, and that 2% would be somewhat in line with that. And in fact, even, even in, even in the second year, we might have a hell of a fight on our hands not to give a cost of living increase in that year. But I'll certainly go along with, with this, with, with, with your forecast in that. The easiest way, the least painful way that we can save eight to $900,000 in each of the three years is to shelve the OPEB contribution. And I certainly would be in favor of doing that when we're operating at a budget deficit like this. Sure, it means that we won't, we won't get rid of our unappropriated, definitely, the, 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 the retirement cost that we have ahead of us. We won't get rid of it in 11 or 12 years. It would have to be, you know, 13, 14 years, but so what? That's the easiest way. And when you talk about $800,000, remember it's every year. So that would be very meaningful to shelve that over this period of time. Let me ask you this. The, the multi-year deficits that you've shown us adds up to about 7.7 million over the three years. The current, what is our current reserve in, in dollars roughly? How many millions?
I think we're, we're, we're somewhere around $19 million.
Okay, so 19 million currently. And if these, if these forecasts held true, that 19 million would be deducted by almost 8 million to about 11. And imagine the impact if this, if, if the JPA revenue went down. This would be a, a near calamity for us. I just, I just want to point that out, that we've got to fight that. As far as deferred maintenance, our maintenance was deferred for so many years and is so urgent that I, I think, my feeling would be that we shouldn't look there for any reductions. We've got to, we, we just have to do our deferred maintenance as, as planned, in my opinion. Now, the next thing is, it seems to me that we were recently discussing certain anticipated legal expenses that would have to be absorbed in the general fund. And I want to talk about those for a minute because I don't think, I don't think you have anything like that projected. Were those the legal expenses that had to do with? With, with. The last thing that we're going to have to deal with Metro on.
Oh, the eminent domain?
Eminent domain.
Eminent domain. What were those, can anybody remind me, what were those legal expenses which we had said that we couldn't charge to bond money would have to be absorbed in the general fund?
So I think, I think, Mr. Spitz, we're trying to find that answer, first of all, correct, Wade? Unless, have you, have, has that been asked? Has that question been asked?
Yes, so the question on the table is, can we utilize Measure E? Not Measure BH, but Measure E for legal expenses related to the MTA eminent domain? Or is eminent domain so general, just the concept of eminent domain, that it needs to be funded out of the general fund? So we're waiting on that answer from council.
Okay, now, my recollection of Measure E was that there wasn't enough in Measure E to cover what we, our anticipated legal costs there. And so if we, if we have to absorb some of those legal fees in the general fund, that's, that's going to be another half million or so, as I recall. That, that Measure E, Measure E wouldn't have the funds for that. So that's, that's another thing that we're going to have to think about. With regard to the JPA, let me just say this thing, this, this, this thought that I have. First of all, I think that it might be a good idea when, 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 in the next liaison meeting, that we be prepared to show the city this three-year projection. Actually, these numbers that we're looking at, like deficits of a million a year, or two, or four, this, this is peanuts for the city. But they have, they have to also see that we're talking about a huge, huge loss of our reserves percentage-wise. And if, if the city should come along with any proposed reduction or not proposed, but just tell us that they're going to reduce by this amount or that amount, or not pay the fourth quarter of the current year, anything like that, I think we have to be prepared to come back to the city and show them how that reduction is going to impact our educational program. Because the city's in, almost in a position of dictating to us. And we're not in a position of saying, we won't accept that. But what we can do is show them what the impact on our educational program will be and that that's going to be made public. And I think that's our leverage with the city. So, so I, I recommend that we proceed that way in our liaison meetings. And I think that covers what I have to say.
And, Mr. Spitz, I just want to add that Mr. Roach and I have had that conversation. And that is information that we can share at our meeting on Thursday.
Okay, so thank you, Mel and everyone, for all of your questions and concerns and statements to the staff. I want to say thank you for this comprehensive report. Mr. Wade, I do have a, Roach, I have a question for you. I didn't see on here anything captured as it relates to BHF. And I know that they are a funding source. And I know that last year or two years ago, they made some commitments having to do with staffing. I'm just kind of wondering, have you heard from BHF as to what they anticipate to continue to fund going forward? I think that would be helpful for the board to consider as we start to adopt our final budget for next year.
Yes, President Necker, we do have a, we do have a tentative budget from BHF for, for next year. I think it's around, it's a little more than $500,000, I believe. They're going to fund, continue to fund part of the PBIAS program and some other programs. But I can definitely bring the detail of that budget back to the, the board for, as an informational item. I think the, the BHF funding is, is a little bit lower than last year, but it's still over $500,000. But I'd be more than happy to bring the detail of their proposed budget.
Yeah, because I, I, I want to recall that they were funding particular, like, some program or positions. And that would be really important if we're going to now, you know, if, if they're reducing a commitment or maybe redirecting it a certain way, it would then bring that commitment to the district, right? So the board would need to evaluate that going forward. And so I want that captured now so that we don't find ourselves in a position where we could have eliminated or made some recommendations or adjustments. So that is a, a very important piece of conversation to have. So if you could bring that up at the next meeting, that would be helpful to be, you know, to, to, to move forward. Okay, so as far as the other services and contracted, what is that? I don't have it in front of me, let me look here. You had it just a little while ago, contracted services category in the budget, which is about $11 million.
Correct.
Yeah. By chance, you don't happen to have a breakdown of what that all is? I know that some of it is involved, does involve basically any contracts, right? Out of teacher salaries and staff salaries, it's, it's everything but, right, mostly? But there is a breakdown of that. I was wondering if there could be any way we can make some adjustments or that would be a helpful conversation to continue for the board to see if there's any changes or we can tighten up our belt there in some, in some areas. Maybe not this year, but the following year.
Most certainly, we can detail to the board of what those charges are, expenses. And I know there's been some carrying back, some of the departments have likely been able to carry. But in some areas, we've had to increase. As we look at the goals and objectives of the district, we've had to add some things, like in technology. We need to make technology a little bit more robust. So we've had to add some contracts in technology. But most certainly, I can bring that up to the board.
Okay, and as we talk about some of the guidelines that are coming down from the state as it relates to COVID-19, they are saying that we're going to be required to sanitize our working areas much more, our classrooms. And I'm just wondering, have we, do we, are we at the top of that list as far as getting any extra money that might be coming from the state or not really? It's going to be something that's going to come out of our general fund. I would assume it's coming out of our general fund.
Yes, I think we'll get an amount of money, probably less than a half a million dollars to do that sanitation and stuff like that. We'll get some additional monies for a program related to coming back to school in the fall. But I anticipate we'll run out of dollars for the sanitation. And then it'd come out of the general fund. And then it'd come out of the general fund and then we could claim that for FEMA and Cal OES reimbursement. But just doing some analysis with staff, looked at just personal protective equipment, just having masks for our students. And I think the cost over the course of a year was over $350,000 for masks.
Okay. All right, yeah, so we're going to have to convey that, I think, in our discussions as we move forward with the city. I just want to say to the board that, you know, I would not, I would agree with Mr. Spitz that trying to catch this discussion in some way where there's already a foreseeable outcome with the JPA would be really too early to determine. We should let that course continue. We've only had one meeting. And so none of which have been, you know, we haven't even discussed any commitments at this point. It's been very preliminary. So I would say that, you know, the mayor has been, has demonstrated a lot of outreach in these last few days. I think it's a priority for him. And I do believe that we should let the course run its course. And I'm hoping for a resolution that would hopefully not be in any way negatively impact, you know, our district, of course. And so we will continue to voice our concerns and share this information, which I think is relevant to the conversation. I also want to just ask you, Wade, one more question. Curbs and stirs. I didn't see that captured. And I wonder, or did you just lump that into salaries and benefits? You did?
Yes, so that in salary and benefits. That's actually one of the little bright spots. The state of California is actually going to temporarily reduce our anticipated increase in curbs and stirs. And we'll break that out to show what that is for the board. But that is part of the salary and benefits. But that's a little bit of good news, actually.
Okay, and then finally, my question, I guess, this is something, again, if we could have this information shared with the board going forward, when you bring back those commitments from BHF, would be conferences and travel. I think that this is a time to look at what we've done in the past. And I'd like to see some trimming in those areas. I think that those are the first areas that we should consider trimming. I know it's not substantial. But everything, a little bit here, a little bit there, I think makes for a better result. So I didn't see that captured fully. If you could bring back to us, break down those categories for us in dollars and cents and kind of show the projection as to how it's increased or maintained in the last three years, I think that would be very helpful for the board to see and take a jab at it. And I think that's it. I don't have any further questions. Thank you. Do you need more direction for us? Or are you, what are your plans going forward? Are you coming back to us with a more modified version of some of the areas that we've all identified where we have interest, maybe seeing projections? Or what do you envision? How do you envision coming back to us? So we know what to expect.
Thank you, President Hacker. First, I just want to say thank you to the business services staff, Angelique, all the folks there. You know, they're actually coming in most days, working, helping prepare these reports, doing a great job. So thank you to business services. And also thank you to Cabinet for all their input during budget development. And also, you know, they've been working really hard with the school sites on staffing and doing the master schedules. And so with the work they've done, we've been able to trim, as you saw, you know, almost 13 FTE from staffing. So thank you to staff for working on that. That's so important. So what we want to do is, we have a little time, fortunately. We want to bring back the information that the board's requested, another presentation that's actually maybe a little bit more detailed to give the board the detail that they need. If not this next board meeting, but the first board meeting in June, we would bring that back to the board for discussion. And the plan right now is, because we don't have an LCAP, we have a little more flexibility in our public hearing. So we can actually have a really robust discussion at the first meeting in June. And then we don't need to adopt the budget or ask the board to adopt the budget until the second meeting in June, the last meeting in June. So we have a couple more bites at the apple to talk about the budget and go through numbers. So I'll bring, if I don't bring additional information to the board at the next board meeting, definitely the first board meeting in June, we'll go back through a lot of this, answer the board's questions and get more direction from the board as we get ready for adoption at the last board meeting in June.
Yeah, and I would just say, along those lines, CTE, for example, that's considered categorical funding, correct?
Correct.
And so there is, there is a lot of movement, I think, in the area, you know, coming from Sacramento and directed at categorical funding. So I'd like to know what the impact, if we know specifically, how management is kind of calculating all of those changes and how, what the impact would be directly to Beverly Hills Unified for next year or the year after, or the year after that. So Dustin, I know you're on the line and I think this is kind of directed a little bit at you. Along the line, along those lines, I think there was other areas that you were all pursuing, some grants, not significant, but it does impact other areas of programming. So if you have any information, preliminary information about those grants, I think now is the time to tell the board so that we know exactly what to expect going forward and there's no surprises.
Most certainly.
Okay, I think that's it. Any other final questions? I'll defer to my colleagues. If you have a question, you can raise your hand and I will call on you. Yeah, I see Mr. Margot's hand. Anybody else? That's it?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, Wade. So right now, you're saying our reserve is about 26%?
Correct.
So how, in order to maintain our 20% level, how much wiggle room do we have on that 6%? How much dollar amount do you think that is?
So that's probably $3 or $4 million, just off the top of my head.
Okay, so according to the current projection, which includes a, obviously, the current level JPA, we'd be able to maintain at least for two years, it looks like, with the 20%, roughly.
Right. If the funding continues at the level projected, then we would be, we would be able to maintain the 20% and for probably two more years.
Right, so it's, well, I guess, like we've all said today, it's really important for us to get that number negotiated and settled so that we can actually make some real decisions based on hard data, not speculation.
I agree.
Okay, so I think that concludes our study session. Dr. Bregge, anybody else, staff? No? Okay, I want to thank you all for your time. Angelique, Wade, and whoever was involved with us, thank you. I think that some of the points that were made today, Wade, I think, Dr. Bregge, maybe we can bring with us to our meeting on Thursday and share some of this information, which, again, I think is very critical to the conversation being had. So again, thank you so much, all. Good work today and we will see each other, God willing, next Tuesday. Thank you, bye-bye. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, President Hacker.
Enjoy.
Thanks.